Good evening. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on November tenth, two thousand twenty-three through posting and notification of press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute one nine point eight four. And the first item, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Millard.
Thank you, Acting President Artree. It's my pleasure to introduce Ashley Wright, the Principal of Wilson Elementary. Mrs. Wright has been a member of the School District of Janesville Community for thirteen years. She has served as the Principal at Wilson Elementary School for seven. Before her role in the administration, she served in several student services-related roles at Wilson Elementary School and in the community support before her time at Wilson Elementary. Principal Wright, who do you have with you this evening?
I have Ms. Kelly Rain. She's a fourth grade student at Wilson Elementary School, and Kelly was chosen this evening because she is an excellent example of character. She's the first one to help other students in her classroom and within the school, and she was recommended by not one but four staff members at Wilson Elementary School.
All right, Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible liberty and justice for all.
We'll keep that pace going here. Next item, there are motion to adopt our agenda for tonight. Motion by Commissioner Henwell and second by Commissioner Paul. All those in favor say aye. Aye. That passes. Seven oh, with President Hayworth and Vice President Murray. Oh, somewhere. They're not in attendance. All right, next item, Commissioner Millard, safety message.
Thank you, Acting President Artree. This month is Child Safety Month, and so in keeping with that, I'm gonna run through some really good suggestions keeping your children safe in their environment. Keep cleaning supplies, medicines, garden chemicals, and toxic art supplies locked away or on a high shelf. Make sure these items are put away immediately after each use. Purchase over-the-counter and prescription medicines with childproof caps. Keep them on a high shelf or locked away, not on a bedroom table. Keep vitamins and minerals such as iron out of the reach. They can be hazardous, even fatal, to children. Never use food containers to store non-food substances. Program the contact number for poison control in your phone to use in case of accidental poisoning. Now for infant safety, a firm mattress and a fitted sheet are all you need for your baby's crib. Remove all blankets and toys, as these could result in unilaterally injuring the baby. Learn to use your child's car seat, booster seat, and seat belt the right way in your vehicle. Use the basic car seat safety checklist to help. Make sure you have both a working smoke alarm and a carbon monoxide alarm on every level of your home and all sleeping areas. Test the alarms to make sure they work. Place your baby's crib and other future, excuse me, other furniture away from the windows and blinds. Your baby is safer without any strings or cords within its reach to prevent a choking hazard. Set your water heater at one-twenty degrees Fahrenheit to avoid scalding. Outdoor safety, never leave children alone outside. When using tricycles, bicycles, skateboards, roller skates, and ride-on toys, ensure that the children all ages are wearing a helmet to prevent head injury. Always use safety straps to secure children in strollers and do not put children who cannot sit up well in a wagon that have low sides, that has low sides. Teach children not to play near the street. Explain that children must ask to help if toys roll into the street or a driveway. Ensure that all the outdoor play areas are fenced in, especially when they're by a busy street. Check the outdoor play area routinely. Remove all trash, sharp objects, including branches and other foliage. Surround electrical appliances in the play areas such as air conditioners with fences so children cannot reach them. Also remove gas grills from outdoor play areas. When playing at a park or playground, check to make sure that the equipment isn't too wet or too hot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Millard. Really appreciate that message as we look at what we primarily do. We need to be paying attention to the safety of our children. So thank you for that. Next item, student presenters to the board from Craig High School, Grace Marotta.
Hello, members of the school board. I hope everyone is doing well and excited for the holiday season. My name is Grace Marotta, and I'm the Student Council School Board Representative at Craig High School. It's lovely to see you all again this month. The fall athletics season came to a close at the end of last month, and we are so proud of all of our athletes. I would like to congratulate all of the athletes that made it to sectionals and state for all of their respective sports. With that being said, the winter sports season is kicking off strong, as Craig has their first basketball game of the season tonight. The girls' basketball team is playing Stoughton at home tonight at seven fifteen PM, and we're very excited for the first game of the season. Key Club is conducting a food drive this month. They will be accepting donations of non-perishable items such as peanut butter, spaghetti sauce, pasta noodles, rice, ramen noodles, oatmeal packets, microwave popcorn, Easy Mac cereal, and individually wrapped snacks such as crackers or cookies. The items will be due the Monday after Thanksgiving break. Students were asked to wear green today to raise awareness for National Youth Homelessness Week. Other clubs at Craig are also conducting a food drive. Blue Ribbons Food Drive is accepting donations for National Youth Homelessness Week. The items they're asking for are assigned to the days of this week. Monday was peanut butter and jelly. Today was deodorant. Tomorrow is pasta and pasta sauce, and Thursday is toothpaste and toothbrushes. And students are asked to drop off these donations at the main doors in marked donation boxes. Parent-teacher conferences for the end of October conducted about a week before the end of first quarter in order to prepare students and parents for the progress reports at the end of the quarter. During conferences on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, students handed out treat bags and beverages to teachers. Students volunteered to do this during their day off in order to show appreciation for our faculty and all that they do for us, going above and beyond to make sure that we are learning and also to make sure that staff were able to have something to eat during their busy day. The end of the quarter was November second, two thousand twenty-three, meaning that we are almost halfway, or that we are halfway done with the first semester, and it's hard to believe that we are that close to winter. Thanksgiving is a time to be thankful for those around you. Student Council is selling pilgrim pops all of this week. Students can purchase from a Student Council member anytime this week, and these will be one for fifty cents or three for a dollar, and the pilgrim pops and suckers will be delivered next Tuesday to the recipient's class. Lastly, I want to thank you all for being here, and I hope that everyone has a great rest of their week.
Thank you very much, Grace. Next, from Parker High School, Addison Riley Lane.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see all of you. I have a lot of news from Parker High School today to share with you all. I know Mr. Krieger's here, and he has a lot of fall sports action to share with you guys, so I have everything else, so. And there's a lot of exciting stuff. So to start out, we have Parker Decca. We volunteered with the South Central Wisconsin Builders Association and the Boys and Girls Club on October thirtieth. Parker Decca had so much fun interacting with our young children and many business partners. Between managing the Halloween-themed games and interacting with the kids, this was a great way to get involved with the Janesville community. Parker Decca hosted our eighth annual Tricker Can event, and it was a success. The Parker Decca members collected a huge amount of non-perishable food items this past Sunday, October twenty-ninth. In total, we accumulated one thousand three hundred and eighty-one pounds of food, which we donated to Echo to help people in the community during the holiday season. We are very proud of our members. A story that I wasn't sure if I was gonna tell, but I'm gonna tell it anyways, so I think it's funny about Tricker Can. A few weeks ago, I had to have my appendix removed, so that was not fun, however. And at the time, I didn't think this was funny, but now I do. So Mr. Zimmerman was. That's what it is, so. And I'm fine now, I can lift again, so. Parker Decca had their business innovations visiting downtown businesses recently. So a huge thank you to Advanced Construction, Big Radio, and Drafthouse. The students had a great visit at local job sites in remodel mode and learned about the future of the downtown area in Janesville, which, there's a lot of stuff going on that I don't think is necessarily talked about that much, but when we were on the field trip, we were seeing tons of, they're putting new apartments on the top floors of buildings, and, you know, they're specifically meant for, they're looking for travel nurses, that's who they're targeting with these apartments, so I think it's really interesting, and it's not talked about a lot, but it is a very cool opportunity to see that. Next, Parker will host a first Lego League Regional on Saturday, November eighteenth from nine AM to four PM. There are twenty-nine teams from southern Wisconsin who will converge at Parker. Each team is to come up with a unique problem and then a solution to that problem based on the theme of the game. This year's theme is all about Masterpiece, where we will highlight the role that STEM plays within the arts. After teams are judged individually on their robot, they move on to the competition phase. The top teams from the Parker Regional will move on to a sectional, which will take place in mid-December. On December second, Parker Robotics Club will take part in the Jolly Jingle Parade with the Citizens Alliance. Print Corporation is a sponsor of this year's robot and is donating a Jetson, a new standard for creating entry-level AI-powered robots. November fourteenth is today. It's National and Youth Homelessness Day. Us and wearing green. The Barn also helped participate in a fundraiser for Project sixteen forty-nine. The Barn had a slushy day today where green slushies were sold all day, and ten percent of all purchases at the Barn will be donated to Project sixteen forty-nine. November sixth through tenth, Parker French students celebrated National French Week. Some of the cultural activities that they did were a scavenger hunt around the school using their French skills, crafts, a West African game day, and a Canadian dance day. We ended the week with a game day after school on Friday with French snacks. Now, every year when I present about National French Week, the French teacher gives me something to say in French. I have never taken a French class in my life, so sometimes I butcher it, but today. Bunsement francese. I don't know what it means, but I think I said it right, so. Next, we have the forty-first Annual Parker Band Chili Supper, which took place on Sunday, November fourth, and was by all measures a success. We served a steady crowd from eleven AM to six PM. The Parker Band students performed popular pep band music on the hour from twelve until five PM, and Mr. Beaster told the casual, usual, bad music jokes. It was a success mainly through the efforts of all of the band parents, who helped organize, publicize, decorate, cook, and clean up. With ticket sales, silent auction items, raffle baskets, and fifty-fifty raffles, the event had a gross sales of just over fourteen thousand dollars. Organization raising funds for future Parker Band travels. Six Parker FFA members attended the ninety-sixth Annual. Recognition and talent from all fifty states. The Avid Ten Group is hosting their first-ever event called Snow Much Fun, where fifty students age K through sixth grade can sign up to attend a two-and-a-half-hour event with our local high schoolers. They will be watching Frosty the Snowman, crafting, eating tasty treats, and playing games while their parents get a chance to take the afternoon off. The event will take place on December third. The Parker Arts Academy is proud to present the world premiere of Humbug the Musical on November thirtieth through December third and December seventh through tenth. This new musical features concept, music, and lyrics by Broadway composer Christopher Curtis with a book by local playwright Jim Like. Tickets may be purchased at the door, online at parkerarts.com, on Napton Music Notes, and Voight Music. Students will have an opportunity to have a workshop with Christopher Curtis and Jim Like, who will be here for the premiere. Humbug the Musical is a captivating show that delves into the untold story of Scrooge and his transformation over time. Through a fascinating love story and an exploration of Scrooge's upbringing, this musical is sure to brighten your holiday season. That is all I have to share with you all today. I hope you, I hope you all had a wonderful day. But I hope all of you have a safe holiday and a wonderful Thanksgiving. Hope you eat lots of food, and I look forward to seeing you guys next one.
Thank you, Addison. All right, next item, citizen comments. Going once. Going twice. At your spot, and what was presented. You gotta include that, too. All those in favor? Aye. That passes seven zero. Next item. Recognize Fall Athletes State Qualifiers. Mr. McCormick and Mr. Krieger.
We do have our first, there we go. We do have our first basketball game tonight, so I'm gonna head back there and watch our girls play tonight, as mentioned earlier. Before I introduce our athletes and coaches, just want to share a few things. Sports real quickly, in tennis, we had Lexie Henkel advance the state championship this year. Not only that, but she was first-team All-Conference and Player of the Year in the Big Eight. And then Raya Ariazola, a junior for us, was second-team All-Conference, and Pam Clutson, who you'll meet tonight, was named Big Eight Coach of the Year in tennis, so congratulations to all of them. In volleyball this year, we had a really good season. We played for the conference championship. We lost that match to Verona, but finished second in conference, so we had a great season and made it to the regional finals and that. You'll meet two cross-country runners tonight that advanced to the state tournament. Addison Fagan's actually playing basketball tonight, but Abby Anderson's here, and here Brandon Miles, our coach as well. And in football, we had two athletes recognized as All-Region for two thousand twenty-three, George Green, offensive lineman for us, and we also had Bealan Woodman as a tremendous kicker for us. And then we also had an athletic signing for Maya Nicholson, who signed a Division One scholarship to play at Northern Iowa in Cedar Falls, and that happened on November ninth. Very proud of Maya for getting that, and she earned that, did a great job. And then just real quickly, for fall sports this past year, we had four hundred and twenty-two students, which is up roughly. All really good numbers. And then for the winter sports, we kick off, all of our seas, all of our sports are now in full swing. We've continued to train some of our coaches through professional development, which we talked about last time I was here, called Inside-Out Coaching, so it's an opportunity for our coaches to learn through the book called Inside-Out Coaching by Joe Erman, who is a, he's a retired NFL athlete, defensive lineman, and Clayton Krieger and I, myself, both had a chance to go see him speak in person a couple times, and he led a workshop for some of our coaches, and there's some really good things that came out of that workshop. And again, I'm gonna keep it brief, but basically what came out of it for us is we asked ourselves, you know, if you give your elevator speech to somebody, why do you play sports? What are you gonna tell a parent? What are you gonna benefit, what's the benefit of playing sports at Janesville Craig High School? We had some really veteran coaches on staff, and really what it came down to is we talked about three things, attitude, effort, and relationships, and so we have the acronym WE ARE, A-R-E, WE ARE CREG. But really comes down to that, and I think, we think it's the most important classroom that there is, the one after school, that have a whole bunch of kids involved in it. So we're continuing that professional development with our coaches, and hopefully all of our sports programs will. We are going to adopt that, WE ARE CREG, you know, you can control your attitude, you can have a great effort, and you can build strong relationships with the coaches and the players around you. So we think that's really important work to continue, and we'll plan on doing that throughout the year. So again, I want to thank you for being here tonight, and then I'm gonna take this opportunity to introduce the Big Eight Tennis Coach of the Year, Pam Clutson.
Good evening, school board. How are we doing today? It is an absolute delight to be standing in front of you again this year. Lexie, I'll put you on that side, too. On behalf of the tennis team, we are grateful that you've invited us here and that you're going to acknowledge the accomplishments of these two young ladies standing next to me. Don't know if you know it or not, but in the tennis world, the Big Eight Conference is probably one of the most competitive conferences. The most competitive in the state of Wisconsin, and Raya, for the third consecutive year, finished third. Third straight year is a state qualifier. So, Raya, I want to present the state badge to you, the certificate of recognition, and I thought you might like that. Lexie Henkel is a sophomore this year. She plays at the number-one position. Lexie has accomplished almost every goal that she set for herself today, so let me just, let me just mark off the accomplishments. Conference champion, first-team All-Conference, sectionals champion, almost state champion. She just missed it by one, she was number two. Lexie is rated as the second-best player in the state of Wisconsin, and she represents Craig High School. And as Ben mentioned, Lexie, for all of her efforts this year, was recognized by the Big Eight as Player of the Year. So, Lexie, I'd like to present this, your second consecutive state patch, letter or certificate of recognition, and I thought you might like that. I am delighted that both these girls are coming back to play for me next year. I imagine that they'll both be standing up here, maybe with a few more next year. Thank you for recognizing their efforts today, and we appreciate the thought that you put into calling them here today. Thank you. I'd like to introduce to you the cross-country coach, Brandon Miles.
Good evening, board members. Thank you again for inviting us back. It's always an honor and a good celebration for the kids. This year, both the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team had another successful season. Almost half our team was new because of lots of graduations and lots of new participants, so that's always something fun as coaches to help teach them the process. We hosted another successful Midwest Invitational, which is the largest meet in the state of Wisconsin, and we're very grateful for our district superintendent and Craig's district athletic director and Craig's athletic director for helping us with that. It's a Titanic ordeal. And this year, we had two qualifiers make it to the state meet. One of them is here with me today, Abby Anderson. One, Addison Fagan, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, has a basketball game, so there's no rest for the way. Both are juniors, both. She was the final individual qualifier for the state meet by half a second, so it got pretty, pretty tight down the stretch for her. Just to give you an idea of kind of what these two and all our athletes do, a lot of them train year-round if they're not in other sports. Abby and Addison also come, and they swim usually twice a week at six AM in the mornings before school to get a little extra work in. I'll use Abby as an example, so frequently each week she'd have a long run, that was about ninety minutes, which was about just over twelve miles on Saturday that she put in, and her dad, Kellen, one of our assistant volunteer coaches, he'd always have to run it with her, so he wasn't always very happy with me, but he did a good job. And we're just so proud of them because they excel not only on the course but also in the classroom. So with that, I want to recognize Abby Anderson with the certificate, and thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm Clayton Krieger, the Athletic Director at Parker High School. Last time I was with you, I kind of shared my purpose as an athletic director. And today I want to shift gears a little bit and share our purpose vision as Parker High School Athletic Department. So we believe that we provide purpose-based athletic programs in a positive and disciplined culture that focuses on continuous learning. As Ben said, we are extension of the school day. Our coaches are mentors and teachers who intentionally develop character skills and create a sense of pride, community, and belonging for us. Of winning or excellence, students will experience challenges. And it is in this, these moments that lessons are taught. Department's purpose vision. With that having been said, this year has definitely been my most challenging as an athletic administrator. At a time when the landscape of high school athletics is evolving, so too is the need for increased time, resources, and energy allocated to athletic programming. At this time, I want to thank, I want to take this moment to thank the Parker community for stepping up to help support our student athletes. The list of individual thank yous is, is much too long, but I just want to thank all of our parents, staff members, teachers, coaching staff, administration, community supporters, middle and elementary schools, local business partners, youth associations, Big Eight athletic directors, WADA members, and Parker students. Thank you. To steal from our Parker football motto, we've really relied on each other as we work together and stay together as we provide education-based athletic learning opportunities for our students at Parker. So now I just want to recap kind of our fall season. To start off with palms and dance, Coach Ally Hopson and her team completed their fall season learning seven new dances and had amazing performance at our homecoming assembly and had the opportunity to travel to a few road football games. Coach Liz Wilson is leading our cheer team, and they continue the road to excellence. Our team has orchestrated school spirit in the building at games during assemblies and has also had the opportunity to travel to away football games this fall. In addition, our team attended the UCA summer camp where they received a bid to the National High School Cheerleading Championship. In cross country, last spring, we had the, the opportunity to announce new faces of our cross country program here at Parker. Coach Amanda Amundsen, who is a teacher in the building and a former Parker athlete, led the way for our boys and girls cross country teams. In addition, assistant coach Eric Lyons, who is a teacher at Franklin, brings a strong passion and dedication to the sport of cross country on the west side of Janesville. This fall, we saw a ninety-two percent increase in participation as we are excited for the future with the addition of cross country being added to our middle school athletics program. In girls golf, Coach Zimmerman continues to be our strong leader and student advocate throughout Parker, in our DECA program, and in the sport of golf in the Janesville community. This fall, our girls finished the season with a six and three Big Eight Conference record, tying in standings with our friends from Janesville Craig. Our team qualified for the WIAA sectional meet, which is one step away from the state tournament. We are excited to recognize Grace Nylons and Olivia Larson, who earned academic all-state recognition this season. Next, boy soccer, Coach Jason Beer stepped up for us big as he took over the, the program this. Athletes and JV competition. With twenty-three of twenty-five players set to return next season, Coach Beer has laid a strong foundation for offseason training. Seventeen of eighteen swimmers hit their personal bests. I just want to recognize Chloe Gliessendorf, who finished with an all-time sixth fastest hundred breaststroke event. And Lily Mayfield, she recorded the second fastest time in Parker history in both the one hundred free and one hundred backstroke events, and was a fraction away from qualifying for state as only a sophomore. With many returning varsity swimmers on next year's roster, the future is bright for our Lady Viking swimmers. In girls twin, in girls tennis, we had another amazing addition to our coaching staff, Coach Sabina Peterson. She brings years of experience. She was a former head tennis coach at Maguano High School. This season, we had a fifty-seven percent increase in participation, and many of those athletes were just first-year tennis players. The girls worked extremely hard and improved immensely, leading to exciting wins at the JV and varsity conference tournament and had outstanding performances at sectionals. With a lot of excitement and positive energy coming from the courts of Parker, the girls are looking forward to the offseason and the 2024 fall athletic season. In girls volleyball, we competed with fifty-five girls in our program, which was the highest participation since nineteen ninety-nine. We continue to show strong engagement in women's volleyball with approximately forty to sixty students each year, sustaining four levels of Big Eight competition. Individual player accomplishments include all-conference honorable mention recognition for Maya Barnes, Kaitlin Mills, Kalen Minnick, and I'm not sure if you know her, but Addison Riley Lean. Just side note on Addison, you guys get to see her, you know, once every month or every other week, and we have the opportunity to listen to her on the announcements every single day. She's just a phenomenal student, student athlete, a phenomenal leader in our, in our building and a mentor to our young people. So all the credit to Addison Riley Lean. In addition, two of our players have recently committed to compete at the collegiate level next season. And lastly, football. Our increased effort and community leadership and outreach, for example, our elementary school visits and our going gold for RE Cancer campaign. Hundred and twenty-two athletes. Our individual player awards did not stop with our thirteen Big Eight All-Conference awards. In fact, we had four players make the all-region team, Keegan Skripchak, Paul Kim, Kaden Brannenberg, and J.J. Douglas. And Paul Kim is also a finalist for the Jim Leonard Award for the top senior defensive back in the entire state. So for everybody that has voted for Paul Kim, thank you. And most importantly, we had two players, Keegan Skripchak with a three-point-nine-something GPA, and Terrell Fisher, that earned academic all-state recognition. So our evaluation of the season indicates that our players created lifelong memories, they built lifelong relationships, and they learned lifelong lessons. Therefore, we feel that the 2023 football season was a success. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Superintendent Holsman and our school board commissioners. My name is Jim McLaury. Again, just grateful for an opportunity to talk to you about our education-based athletic programs. There's a few other folks I would like to come up to address you. But again, just, just want to share for, for those who may not know, our, our education-based athletic department is not just our two high schools, but it also includes our three middle schools as well. And we, we definitely put in the same vision, mission, and, and drive into opportunities there. So I'm going to introduce a couple of those athletic directors tonight. And also, an extension of our team is our administrative assistant team. So Chris Nicholson, who's the administrative assistant in this building for our department, is a, been a very solid foundation for us. And. But they contribute in helping our building athletic directors execute their job at the highest level possible. We just couldn't do it without them. So again, just want to make sure that we have a much larger team than, than just what happens at the high school level. So I'm gonna ask Mitch Trinan to come up. This is his first, this is his first semester as our athletics director, and he had a couple of things he'd like to share. So Mitch?
Like Jim was saying, my name is Mitch Trinan. Matthew over at Marshall Middle School, first, yeah, first couple of months being an athletic director. Just, um, things, just kind of recap some season one spot. We had a hundred and eighty-four total athletes out, which up fifty-one athletes from last year for, for season one. One thing I want to point out is that it was eight, eighty-five total sixth graders. And I think the, what we're doing at the, at the middle school level is going in the right direction, trying to get as many sixth graders out as we can. So I think that was a very positive thing that I know came from a lot of sixth grade families in sixth grade. Kids alone, just them coming up and sharing with me. We had a total of fifty-five cross, cross-country runners out. That's a big thanks to a coach who ran a club on the east side of Janesville and incorporating that now as being a coach for us at Marshall's been a huge, a huge benefit. Being my first year athletic director, I couldn't thank our, our coaching staff, going from our cross-country coach coming over. Our football coaches, knowing that tackle removed from the middle schools, they were willing to transfer over and help us out with our flag football program. Sixth grade, mini seasons for basketball. Our eighth grade basketball coach was again willing to come down and take over those mini seasons. The value for our education-based athletics that I believe is that students are just becoming better people, not just better players on, on, on the field. And I think that starts with just our communication that we have with our admin and our coaches as we enforce kind of the same expectations as it, as other eighties have said, is just being that extension from the, from our classroom and just seeing all the benefits that we have from getting our students involved. So, thank you.
So Matt McCollough is not with us this evening. Matt is our athletic director at Franklin Middle School, and his family has recently expanded, and he was also on the Parker football staff, so he has had a very busy fall, but just has been an excellent leader for us and really has his heart in, in the right place of trying to find ways to connect our kids. But who is here tonight is Carl Schenzel. He is our Edison Middle School Athletic Director.
My name is Carl Schenzel. I've been the athletic director, athletic director for eight years at Edison, been teaching for twenty-three years. Last year, we had a hundred and eighty-five students participate. This year, we had two hundred and thirty-five. So we had a fifty. Numbers that we have with tentative numbers for dance and cheer, we're gonna have a hundred and nineteen new kids doing something at Edison with the mini seasons, so that's a great success, I feel. One of the things, the highlights that I wanted to just say is thanks for my tennis coaches. Our numbers are really high. We have thirty kids participating with three courts, so I just want to give a shout out to them for doing such a great job. A couple other implementations are, we're at second year for using our school for registration. I'm hoping that's helping at the high school level. I haven't had to deal with a lot of phone calls in regards to registration, so it also, it now has a new feature with the app, and so it's helpful for the parents to be able to see the schedules and changes that occur. So that's been a good success so far this year. I did get an opportunity to do some professional development at the WADA conference. I got to listen. Features through our, our school. I also got to see some great presentations and also just networking with, and talking and learning from other athletic directors, even at lunch was a good, a good success for me to hear how things are done differently at different districts. The other thing I wanted to do. Thousand four, if you ever are at Edison, outside our gymnasium, there's some plaques, and we give the kids sportsmanship. Season or for sport, we have not created one for the mini seasons, but for some of the mini seasons. But I did add a little plaque for dance and cheer for sportsmanship board, and they get a plaque and they get announced, and I think that's a great thing for our kids. Thanks.
Quick, quick question, or just a clarification. Mini seasons.
Yeah.
That's a new concept of you would just share, you know, the, the activities and what's in, what makes up the mini seasons.
Yeah, so first, some of you guys that are, are newer, have not heard, we transitioned and did a partnership with the football or tackle, and we actually did flag football. And with the money with, that we've saved, not doing tackle with the reconditioning of helmets and shoulder pads and that, we got to take and create some new mini seasons that would help the sixth grade. And so we had the exact numbers, I can't, I think it was fourteen days for girls volleyball for sixth grade. Also added six, sixth grade boys basketball for another two weeks within, inside our first season. And then we also added cross country back that wasn't there for a while at Edison Middle School. I know that volunteer Marshall had a little. And then we've also added dance and cheer. Cheer right now, tentatively, I have already thirty-three students interested in running a mini season of fifteen days. That will be run during season three. And then also dance, I have a tentative, again, this is late February, so I would assume there's gonna be more people interested in dance, that'll be another fifteen days. And so the kids are getting an opportunity. Would that answer your question?
Absolutely. I just, I knew about the mini season, and I thought it was important to just share because it's kind of, it's a new concept that we haven't heard, and just how many more students that we're impacting at an earlier age or grade level.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred and nineteen kids, and for the new seasons, that's a lot of kids, a lot of opportunity for the kids.
Thank you.
Thanks.
About the mini seasons, you know, we, our approach in our athletic department is what problem are we trying to solve? And, you know, we, we're looking at our data, and we really. Especially during the fall, when they come to their new schools, that sets up our kids for healthy habits, a connection with other people, discipline, a reason to come to school. And so as we did our retreat last year, we identified, so we, we do student surveys, and we gather that data, we align it with some of our goals, looked at where some of our need areas were, and that's how we ended up creating the, the sixth grade mini seasons. We would love to have longer seasons, absolutely, but you need, need to utilize the space and the resources that you have. So this was, uh, this was our stake in the ground this year with, with sixth grade mini seasons, and we're looking for opportunities to expand that in the future. But it's, it's all connected to our, our mission. So there's, there's purposeful and intentional on that, so, thank you. So I have, have a lot of ground to cover here. I will do the best I can to be, to be brief. But, so every other week, I meet with six other athletic directors who are also district-level athletic directors across our state. And we talk about busing, supervision, legal issues, you name it. And we started having a conversation about what matters most. And we had different opinions between the seven of us, so I sent out a survey to athletic directors across our state, and, and the question was really, what, what matters most when it comes to education-based athletics? Well, I'm delighted to say I got some affirmation on this, because eighty-seven percent of the respondents said student participation is what matters most. And so the affirmation for me is how do we find opportunities to get our kids plugged in to their schools? And it's all connected. If we invest in our kids and their experiences, that means we have to absolutely invest in their coaches. And for us to put investment in their coaches, we have to invest in their athletic directors, and so on, and so on, and so on. So all these things are connected. We, we can't just blow up one tire at a time. There's a lot of our work to do here. But we're, we're delighted that this fall, we had over eleven hundred students involved in something at their school across our district. But, uh, we're, we're delighted that, uh, this fall, we had over eleven hundred students involved in something at their school across our district. Um, that says a lot about, um, about our buildings, about the administrative teams, about, uh, the coaches, about our teachers, finding ways to get our kids plugged in. So, so we're really excited about that. You know, we keep using the word education-based and the reason we're using education-based is because that's what we are as a school district. We believe that what we're trying to provide for our, for our students through athletic experiences is based on best practices. How do we help kids deal with adversity? How do we help kids achieve goals? How do we help them establish goals? And. More attention to, we know we can do better is how do we help our students navigate and self-advocate for themselves? What a great place. Is in middle school and high schools to learn to advocate for themselves with their teammates, with their coaches, to have tough conversations. We look at it as a partnership between our coaches and their teams that they coach, not an adversarial relationship. So I think we need to, we need to continue to work on that. And so those are gonna be some things we're intentional about. But, but I would like to just tell you, what, what are some of the things we're investing in right now and we know that are gonna pay dividends, um, in the future? So, um, definitely, uh, we made a point to invest in our students. And, and again, just to share, you've heard some of the participation numbers and we're very intentional about the things that we're trying to do for our kids. So we're investing in our students. How do we help our high school cross-country program become more accessible? How do we do that? We want to build up that coaching staff is, which is, which we did this year. And then what would it look like if we introduced cross-country back into all three middle schools? And so we believe that that is going to help grow those numbers, but the key is getting kids access to something they have passion for. Let's start at the young age and, uh, and let's plan for it to continue on. How do we help the sport of foot? But let's join forces, um, with J Y F and let's start to align that program. What would it look like if our high school coaches had? Ball level. So we believe that these are the kind of things that are gonna increase participation, increase numbers, um, gonna have more of our students connected. Um, it's gonna help those programs to go on, uh, to continue to, to go in the right direction. Um, we've added our mini seasons this year. Um, we've had an opportunity this year to re-educate our students on how to use a locker room, what's appropriate to do in a locker room. What are some rules we have to follow in a locker room? So we've been very intentional about that month after month. And again, re-educating our coaches, uh, in our student body, how you use locker rooms. Again, something we take for granted, but again, something, uh, something that we've, uh, we've made it a point to make sure we are, um, spending time on. Um, I'm really excited about, uh, Ben McCormick's leadership at Craig. Uh, Ben has, Ben has several ideas. One of his focus goals this year for him in his building is creating a student leadership council program. And so that's gonna be kicking off probably shortly after, uh, after Christmas. But, uh, what a great initiative. We've identified a need and we are figuring out, uh, a best way to, to move forward so we can give our kids that voice, that self-advocacy. Um, we are working, uh, during our retreat, we do a retreat every winter with our team of athletic directors. We're gonna be, uh, diving into our student, um, athletic code of conduct. We believe that we have some opportunities to get better. We have, uh, opportunities to better align with our mission and vision as a district. And we haven't done that exercise in a few years. It's absolutely the right time for us to engage in that. And the idea, how do we create a tool that helps our kids become the best they can be? Um, and then, uh, some other things we're looking at here, um, in the next few weeks, you'll hear some more about, about lacrosse and what that's gonna look like or what that could look like. Um, we're having conversations about girls' hockey. We already have that program, but we are not the lead school. But what, what could that look like? Um, we're going to be investigating some seventh grade sports opportunities as well, um, at the middle school levels. And, um, unified sports, um, uh, which, uh, which has started to get some, um, traction across our state. Sun Prairie has, has a program. Well, how do we have our, our kids with some different? Offering, again, going back to what matters most, participation. So how do we get every kid that wants to be involved, involved? And then esports is something our state association is looking at. And, um, it, it definitely fits into the realm of what we're trying to accomplish through our athletic program. So we, we're gonna be diving into some of those conversations as well. So obviously investing in our coaches, making that connection, a few things. Um, we are, we are the only school district in the state of Wisconsin that has such an aggressive and intense, um, opportunity for coach professional development. So we have a coach academy that we created last year, uh, that spans across the entire school year. Um, we, we actually just got that kicked off this last month, but we, we, uh, we as a team of athletic directors really believe in the curriculum of inside-out coaching. And, um, we will do our best over the next few weeks to share even more of that information with you. But, but most of our coach academy is built around, uh, the coach, uh, the inside-out coaching philosophy. And, um, I, I believe in your packet, there are some, some pages there, but I would love to continue to have some conversation, uh, with you. That, that's a, a, a relationship with the Green Bay Packers, our state association, and, uh, we are making it our own in our school district. Another piece. Coach intern program. And so we're piloting that at Craig High School. What's a, what's a coach intern program? Um, I think if I can reference. Uh, as, as Mr. Garner will say, quite often in a school district, there's several positions we have, we have to fill in. And some of them are, um, are, are continuing to be positions that we need to fill. So obviously what, what we want to do for our kids is we want, we want to sustain a coaching staff over a long period of time. Um, and one of the ways we could do that is grow our own. So we are looking with our coach intern program is what would it look like if we had a recent graduate, uh, somebody in our community, um, who wants to get involved in coaching, doesn't know where to start. Um, but typically when you hire somebody young to be a coach, you put them in as a freshman coach and they're over on the other field, they're over on the other side of the screen. Our internship program is gonna be different. You're gonna be a, um, quasi-assistant coach on the varsity program, being mentored directly by the varsity coach. And so, uh, as we, we get out of the gate this year, that's a, a volunteer position. But we do have expectations, requirements with training and certification for those people and some targets along the way. So, so we hope that's gonna be a, really a grow. Spanning to, um, to multiple sports during the course of a year. Um, additionally, um, as, as Clayton had mentioned, we have youngs, coaches and the winter side this year. And so we're going to be piloting our coach mentor program. So we have somebody who's going to be working. I, I will spend as much time as I always can to help our coaches as a mentor. But having somebody in the building who knows the culture of that building, that can work with this group of coaches before school, after school, we felt that that's, that had some merit. So we do have a, a coach identified to be our pilot here. But again, we have benchmarks in this relationship, just like a cooperating teacher would have, um, with student teachers. So we believe that's gonna pay big dividends for our coaches, um, and our, our kids in the long run as well. Um, and something, some of the things about investing in our athletic directors. So all five of our athletic directors are members of the W I A A and also the National Association of Athletic Administrators. Uh, and, um, they've been attending our conferences. They've started their work in their L T I certifications. Um, probably a best thing about going to a conference is learning how. We're still working to get better at that, but there's an insert and I just think it's, it's important, um, or, uh, one of the appendices. It's important for us to know that when we put somebody in a position to be an athletic director, whether it's a district level or a building level, there's so many things that happen, um, because of the decisions that they make. Training game staff, working with police, working with, uh, with, uh, um, their athletic training staff, hiring, hiring workers, hiring coaches, training coaches, working with parents. There's all types of things that they are very, uh, that they're very involved with. You know, just getting a, just getting a football game off the ground, or Ben, Ben is doing a basketball game tonight. Just getting a basketball game off the ground takes a lot of coordination, a lot of training with our staff, putting in people in place. And it's not just, uh, coming together one night, uh, but it's months and months of planning and preparation. Um, so think, again, that's just a good visual for us to see. Um, other thing that, uh, we're challenging our athletic directors on is there's a, there's a national certification, um, certified master athletic director, certified athletic director or administrator, and then there's a middle school certification. And we're at, we're having our middle school and our high school coach, uh, athletic directors go through this certification process. It's courses, it's project, it's a test. But, uh, we expect them to be instructional leaders that impact education-based athletics in their building. And so we want to make sure they get the proper training to be able to do that. Um, we are doing an evaluation process with our athletic directors this year. We're. And again, again, keep challenging them to grow and to get better at what they do. Uh, and just a, a few things, um, all of our athletic directors also teach. Uh, they all also coach. They all are the direct supervisor of the coaches in their department and they are also the go-to, um, for, for their student athletes in, in need. And, um, quite often when I'm in the building, working with these, these gentlemen, um, we, you know, we get, we, we're interrupted because a student needs them. We're interrupted because a coach is trying to call them. And the thing is, it just reinforced to me how much they are relied upon to be the go-to people for, for coaches and kits. Um, my, my challenge for them is how do I, um, how do I advocate for them to give them the most amount of time for them to be able to do their job as effectively as possible? In the athletic world, particularly, um, our athletic directors, they have. The problem solvers, um, and they're not complainers. They just, how do we get the job done? But my advocacy continues to be is how do we create? Our kids and our student athletes. As more and more students, um, are, are dealing with emotional crises, um, and. Why more and more on their athletic directors and their coaches to be the go-to people? And as more and more coaches are out of the building, we need to be creative with how we spend our time on our coaches, how we meet with our coaches during the course of a day, because they're not all just down the hall. And then, uh, last couple of things here, some of the things we're trying to get better at, we, we really want to be the leaders. We don't want to wait and have it thrust upon us. We want to be the leaders. Um, we are trying to work very hard on some next level things. Um, fir- first of all, um, again, we, we expect, uh, participation to increase all of our seasons. We are working very hard to make sure that we are connecting with, with students who are, who aren't connected, providing opportunities and listening to our kids of the experiences that they, they want to see happening. This powerlifting one keeps coming up. We'll, we'll, we'll see where that goes. Um, athletic, athletic registration and fee adjustment is something that we worked on for this year. So thank you for your help and support with us, um, changing our participation fees. Um, our seasonal code meetings is something we, we've, uh, continued to adopt, uh, in part of our customer service. Um, regular communications, uh, from coaches with. Forms with the goal of getting to one platform that can be our communication platform, uh, from our coaches to our kids across the district, our families. How can we improve our processes to make it, uh, athletics, uh, as easy as possible, uh, for our families? Um, what we're actively looking, looking at right now with the help of our business office here is we're looking at the waiver and, um, athletic registration process. And so we have, we have a few different pieces that we want to bring together at one and make it as simple as possible for our families and for us to be able to, to respond to their needs. Um, and then, um, we are also, uh, we know that, uh, in the state of Wisconsin, the, the W I A cross-country championship site, which is, uh, in, uh, Wisconsin Rapids is gonna change. It's gonna be open for, for bid. And so, uh, we plan on bidding in Janesville and, uh, being the, um, state championship site for cross-country for boys and girls. So, so we fully expect to move in that direction and put our best foot forward. So when the twenty-twenty-six season comes around, we are hosting. Stay ahead of our curve. And then, uh, again, just want to share with you, what, what are, what are we talking about with education-based athletics? How do we spend our time? What does excellent look like? What problems are we really trying to solve? What would easy solutions look like? Um, you know, what, what is getting in our way of some of these easy solutions? What would improvement look like? Um, how do we put foundational pieces into place for next year or for two years from now? Um, and I think one question we need to keep asking ourselves is we're a division one high school community with two division one high schools. Well, what could that look like? Not just facility-wise, but in structure, the way we treat people, um, the, uh, the way we, the way we, um, assign coaches, train coaches, uh, the way we treat our student athletes. And then, um, something personal for me is how do we keep becoming better stewards through education-based athletics? How, how do we use that experience to meet the emotional, uh, and, and mental needs of, of everybody? And that's not just our students, but often it's their families. Okay. We are, uh, we are often the sounding board for many of our families. They, they connect with us as coaches and athletic directors. And then how do we do this for our game workers? How do we do this for our officials? And then how do we do this for our coaches and building administrators as well? How do we use these experiences to, um, to, to try to meet those needs and, and be good stewards? Um, facility planning is my, my last thing, um, is, uh, we are, we are so excited to be at the table, um, the athletic department, um, with, uh, E A U and, um, point to beginning. And, um, we're expecting as we go through the exercises, which I think you'll hear some about today, we expect on the other side of the beginning of the year to, uh, to really start doing more of our work from the athletic end. Anyways, we, I guess my last thing is, uh, in a district this size, um, athletic participation is, is something that matters regardless of the size. Athletic participation may, participation may, matter, participation matters greatly. And we believe that it is the best bargain. One of the best bargains we have in a district is giving opportunities for our kids to participate in athletics. And, um, Clayton and Ben and I have this conversation quite a bit. Um, I don't think that education-based athletics, um, is necessarily a compliment to the classroom. I don't think it's an extension of the classroom. Education-based athletics in a community like ours is absolutely, is absolutely a classroom. Um, thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I, I know I've gone over, but any questions?
That was a comprehensive report and you touched on a lot of bases and that, and some very positive things. Have a question that's coming up around the country just a little bit, but it's hitting nil. Are we seeing any at the high school level? Has the state set up any kind of guidelines? There are some exceptional athletes that possibly could be affected by that.
Yeah. So, so, uh, the nil, that's, so it's name, image and licensing is, is what he's talking about. And so, yeah, so my understanding is currently there are thirty-four states that currently have adopted an NIL policy. Um, last weekend at our conference, uh, the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Conference, we were given an update on where our state is. And so we expect probably in April, some, um, some suggestion on how our, our state is going to react to it. So we are one of the holdouts right now. So we would expect there to be some movement. Uh, again, we want to stay ahead of the curve. We don't want to have it thrust on us as a membership. And so I would expect by April to be some language addressing. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. The, the education-based athletics and focusing, and a lot of which is shared focused on the athletic side. And I guess my question to you is what can we do as a board and as an entity to make sure that the student side gets fulfilled? Because I know, having participated in high school athletics, cause there was no middle school, the impact the coaches had on me. So I know that's a window into the rest of everything else often. So is there anything that we can do to, to help?
Yes, yes. Every idea I bring forward, if you guys will please approve it, yes.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah. So we, we want to make sure everything we bring to this table is aligned with a greater goal. And, and, um, we have the data support why we were, why we're gonna do this. So, so I think, um, over the next few months, we're gonna continue to have some ideas and I, um, uh, I, I know we're gonna have ideas. And, um, you, you know, again, the participation thing is, is not just the athletic piece, but there's, there's clubs and all kinds of activities in each, each of our schools. How do we get one hundred percent of our kids connected? Okay. That is, that's a great goal and, and maybe difficult to obtain in a short period of time. But how do we create, how do we create opportunities? Things that matter to our kids and not just the thing, but then the right people and the right structure to help it be successful. So that's what we're constantly thinking about. And we, we believe that in the education-based athletics world, activities world, that we are absolutely a partner for student achievement in the classroom. We think by what we, the experiences that we're able to provide, and, and again, this, this is all one umbrella. is all one umbrella. And, and in this part of it, we know that if we have high standards, we have a standards for, for our students academically, behavior, behaviorally, citizenship-wise, we know that the evidence shows that there's an opportunity for kids to have the potential to be more successful and, and contribute in a more positive way in their schools. And so, again, that's why the participation matters. So, most of the things we keep bringing forward are, how do we get kids involved? So I guess that's a very broad answer. I could go way deeper, but I think we've used plenty of my time here, but I would love to talk more.
We will do that. Okay, thank you. All right, next we get to shift gears into my world, finance, buildings, and grounds. All right, next, long-range facility planning process. No, Mr. McCray to introduce.
We're going right to.
Preemptive speech or? Right to.
Do you have our presentation? Does it go up?
And T.
Patrick, are you going to? Good evening, hello. My name is Kit Daly, and I am here from EAU, representing the first of a small posse of people. We have an army of people that have been working in the background for six, seven months specifically on a facilities assessment, which is the first step in long-range planning. And that's what we're here tonight to talk to you about, to make sure you know what information is being gathered, what to expect in the coming months. There's a lot of data, a lot of analysis, a lot of thoughtful conversation with your staff that has been happening behind the scenes. So we're excited to be here tonight and to talk to you about that. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to get started. Am I pointing this a certain direction? Oh, here. Down button. Okay, awesome. Great. So again, Kit Daly is my name. I'm with EAU. I am, I am a principal in the firm, and I am here as your client executive from our firm. That means that we in the firm make sure that you've got someone working with you from the very beginning of, of processes and projects, all the way through as a content, a main point of contact. So I'm excited to be that, that person and to be a resource to our team. I'm going to let the rest of our EAU team introduce themselves, and then we're going to, we're going to walk through the.
All right. Well, it's good to see you all again. Wasn't long ago that we were back here presenting broader teams' efforts, both in the office as well as our engineers that we've brought on to help perform the assessments, the various team to gather that information, compile that information, and then work with the district moving forward to present that and leverage that into what-if scenarios as we move forward. So along with me is, not here tonight, but certainly a vital part of the team is Jeremy Hackbart. He's a senior project architect. He's been responsible for getting into many of the buildings with others on our, our staff to really look in the dark corners and find out all the, the fun little attributes of each building. So I'll hand it off to, to Bob to talk about the educational side of the assessment, so.
Yeah, so Bob Morris, senior design architect and education planner with Epstein UN Architects. I've been with the firm for about 16 years, and my passion is really aligning spaces with how you teach and making sure that the spaces that you have accomplish. And I believe you've already met Roberto Jaimez, who's kind of my partner in crime. We work hand in hand together as solutions in the future in response to this study.
And my name is Andy. I am a communications and engagement specialist with EAU. My main role on the project is during this pre-referendum planning phase, ensuring that the voice, that the community has a voice in the planning process, that your stakeholders, your staff, your parents are involved and engaged in the, in the planning process.
Friends from Cullen?
Hi, I'm Marissa Young. Pretty similar to how Kit described her role. I'm a client executive for the JP Cullen side. For those of you unaware, JP Cullen's the contractor of choice, so thank you for selecting us through that competitive process. But I work hand in hand with the community through the community engagement side and just really working through as the school district as a whole, and then all of the partners that we have in place, and just making sure that you've got that consistent voice from day one all the way through the end of the project and beyond.
Good evening, I'm Mike Johnson. It's good to see some new faces and also familiar faces. I am, as seen there in the pre-construction services department, I'm the pre-construction manager for this project. I've been involved with the Janesville School District, and I see Dan, almost too much, Dan, but we've been working together on Secure Pathways, on building automation systems, upgrades, and other, a lot of things moving and flowing within the district. I'm looking forward to the challenge of tackling this facility master plan, taking lessons learned from Secure Pathways and projects similar to that, and taking the lessons learned and moving forward and getting to a successful referendum in November.
Lindsay's here from POB.
Lindsay we kind of co-lead our activities, we like to call it now, in our K-12 division. So you'll be seeing a lot more of me in the next couple analyzing, or we have analyzed a lot of your sites, and then we'll be working through the master planning process with you, so.
So as you can see, you, you really do have a really strong team of partners that you've assembled, and we're thrilled to be here on this journey with you. And so tonight is about making sure that you do understand what's happening with long-range planning, and so that as we continue forward in the process, you are prepared. We have a lot of information, as I said, that is being assessed. And so, one of the things we want to do tonight is make sure that you are familiar with and comfortable with what that facility assessment will look like when we come back to you in the coming months. We're going to be first meeting with the Buildings and Grounds Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee. I, for some reason, struggle with that name, and I keep wanting to call it Finance and Facilities, but we're going to be meeting with that group towards the end of December, and then the, the full board and in a workshop in January, we're going to be rolling out the results of our assessment. But first, before we talk about that, Tori's going to walk you through each of those components so you understand and have some expectations. We want to make sure that you're grounded in long-range planning and why it matters, right? So it's critically important that as you, we look at your buildings and assess it from all the different perspectives that go into assessing school buildings in particular, that we're grounded in your why. Why do we do this work? Why does it matter? What is ultimately our, your goals so that we as a team can support that? And so I just wanted to make sure that for your reference and for the community, that we all, we're all on the same page about the why. So these were your long-range facility planning district goals as it related to facilities. So these were established first in the school board in 2019, and we're using these to really keep us focused and to ground our work. And so as we come out of the assessment and we start talking about priorities, and we start thinking about potential solutions, and we start thinking about how to address your comprehensive needs in a district this size, we know we have some benchmarks to guide us. So your why, your district facilities will be: safe, healthy, and secure facilities for students, staff, and visitors. They will be accessible and code compliant for students, staff, and community use. They will be cost-effective in utilizing energy-efficient practices. We will be sustainable, using materials and building components that will serve the district well into the future. They will be designed with adaptive and flexible infrastructure, supporting the learners of today and tomorrow. We will look for, they will be equitable throughout the district for students and staff. Learning environments will be engaging and supportive, and, and your district facilities will be an element of community pride. So with those sort of eight guiding principles, if you will, we're going to be continuing to assess these facilities and bring those results. You will see those again, these guiding principles, and we, as we move through results and start thinking about what does this mean for Janesville? How do we begin to tackle those really comprehensive solutions? So a lot of times when we're working with, with districts, we've learned that no matter the size and the scale of, of their district and their needs, there really needs to be a strong process. And I think this is something that our team is very experienced with, and this is why we can work you through this process that is very comprehensive, yet getting to, getting through that in a, in a very succinct way. So when it comes right down to it, when we think about long-range facility planning, we think of it strategically, right? We think of it just like you're aligning and doing strategic planning right now with a separate work group, which we're super excited about. Bob Morris is going to be presenting with them at their next meeting, next Monday night, talking about learning environments and what those look like today in modern schools. So we're excited about that opportunity. But ultimately, we want to make sure that this process is driven by decisions that can be made from data, so that are data-driven, right? Strategic facilities planning should be data-driven. It should be aligned with your vision and your mission and your guiding principles that we just talked about. Ultimately, if, if we fail to do that, this isn't, not a successful long-range plan. We absolutely need to be cognizant of the fact that a long-range plan is not something that you, in a district this size, will bite off all in one big chunk, right? We have to be practical about it. We will need to be looking at this as phases. In fact, I would, I would say you've already begun that. You did really the first phase when you did your secure entrances in 2020. So you, you've already, you are already in the phasing, and as we continue to think about that, that's something very strategic and critical in our mindset as we look to accomplish and address your needs. Your strategic planning needs to ultimately support your academic and your co-curricular and your athletic goals in all the ways you serve students and families in your community. So it's more than just one lane, right? It's all of those factors that you do every single day in your schools, and so does this facilities planning process. It needs to align with that. And at the same time, your strategic planning for facilities needs to be actionable. We need to be able to, to take action and move forward in those defined steps in order to accomplish it and make it timely and to actually get after these needs. That's one of the things that's difficult for districts, is that they become overwhelmed, right? And so how do we, how do we tackle that? So as we walk you through process in the, in the coming months, those are some of the, the really critical questions that we're using to guide our work, making sure that we are actionable. The graphic on the left is sort of a simplified way, I think, of looking at how do we, how do we approach this? It's sort of an inverted pyramid, if you will, and it starts at the top with facilities assessment. That is what we have been doing as a team for you for over six months. We've been in your buildings, as, as Tori said, we've been looking at all the different components of your buildings. We've been meeting with staff since school has started. We've been running numbers. We've been analyzing. We've been doing all of that. And that's the first step really in long-range planning, is this gathering of data. And it's a current snapshot. It's comprehensive, and it helps set that foundation for moving forward. And that evolves over time. So I'm, we need to make sure that we know today what we are dealing with as we plan for tomorrow. So the very first step is what we're doing right now, what we're going to be reporting out on in the coming weeks. The next step after we do the assessment is to really move through a very distinct prioritization phase, and I think that's going to be a big challenge here, right? We have so many needs. We have so many sites. 23 sites have been evaluated, and so we've got to really collect data and work through guiding principles through all the other parameters we've talked about to identify and focus on those priorities and how to apply them to your schools and sites. Once we've done that, we need to start defining some solutions. And solutions ultimately will lead to the first phase of you really implementing your long-range plan, or arguably your second, if we talk about the, the safe and secure entrances. The other thing I want to indicate or just take a minute to talk about is in between every one of these steps, we believe what is critically important is community involvement, is community engagement and getting that stakeholder voice, whether that's students, whether that's staff, that's parents, that's business partners, community partners. We need to have those folks in this process. So we're excited about that. We're already looking for opportunities to do that. We think you've got a great springboard. So we can use that momentum and that, that engagement that's already begun to begin to talk about facilities and long-range plans and goals and priorities and to weave that through every step. We don't come up with this in the back room and then simply take it to the community and trying to convince them that it's the right plan. We believe that you have to do this authentically, and we need to do it with purpose at every single step. So this is sort of a graphic that, that tries to capture that. You have been looking at this kind of graphic, this long-range facility planning graphic. This is sort of your journey. I believe Dan McCray has presented this to you several times over the course of the last several years. Have you sort of talked about what is long-range planning? How do we get there? And I really want to compliment the district for being thoughtful and being considerate about these steps from many years ago. As we said, as you look at this graphic, it really does start back with the 2017 when you, you comprehensively started to tackle some of your mechanical needs with the Energy Efficiency Act 32, and then you moved through, and that helps you frame up and go to referendum in November of 2020 for what was prioritized as secure pathways. So you were able to, to address that at the same time you were able to shore up your operational funding with an operational referendum to your community in November of 2020. You've moved through them. You were able to maximize ESSR fundings. We've been teamed, working with you and your buildings through all the ESSR improvements and continuing to make sure we're maximizing that. And then in 2022, you had the foresight to begin the process of understanding what are the demographics? What is the enrollment growth? These are critical factors that affect district planning and specifically facilities planning. And you were able to begin that process by having MD Roffers come in and do a community enrollment and growth projection study. We did the first step of a facility assessment at that point by doing capacity and building utilization, so we could really understand what your buildings can offer and start to align that with current enrollment as well as potential future enrollment. So you've really been positioning yourselves very strategically along this whole process that led to this, this process here, going through a competitive process, hiring your team to do the comprehensive facilities assessment, which brings us to today. And as we begin to move forward, as, as Dan McCray had indicated to you, 2023 and 24 are continuing to be planning and engagement and defining the scope of what should we tackle, where should we tackle it, how do we communicate that, et cetera. It does tee you up and has been very transparent from the beginning that the target would be November of 2024 for a potential referendum. And that would be just similar to 2020, when you went out to voters last time. You had an operational referendum on the ballot, and you also had, you tackled facility and stuff like that. So with that same parallel strategy in mind, we've known as a team since the beginning of a November 2024 referendum was the, is, was and is the initial goal. So with that in mind, that's what this team has been trying to help you be prepared for. That's important. It's important because November 2024 is a presidential election, and that is when the majority of your stakeholders, your voters, will actually turn out to vote. And that means your community will have the most opportunity to weigh in on the future of your facilities. And that's what we want. We want your community to be directing and guiding that work. If for some reason down the road you're not ready, you have other opportunities beyond that, but for all intents and purposes, we are working as a team with you to try and position you to be ready for November of 2024, just as Dan has been mapping out for many, many months. So with that in mind, I want to share with you a timeline that we have, as a team, have articulated to guide this work. It's hard to read on screen. I did bring everybody a larger copy, 11 by 17, maybe because I can't read the eight by 11, but let me just hit a few highlights there. And I want, I want you to think about this timeline as sort of a roadmap, right? We right now, we, we have a journey. We have a destination, and right now, we're going to focus on our destination being November of 2024. That's really honestly just the beginning of the work, as this whole rest of the team will focus on. But right now, we, we have a journey to get to between now and then in defining that first step in the master plan and how we get there. So with, with November 2024 as our destination, I'm going to, I'm going to actually take you back to where we are at the beginning. to where we are at the beginning. Because what we're doing is making sure that you're charting and prepared for that. November of 2024 actually means you as a district need to be making final decisions about what to put before your voters by August of 2024. That's going to come pretty quickly as we or what, 13th, 14th? That's going to come pretty fast. So, a year from now, we will hopefully be celebrating a project. We don't know what that is right now at all. But right now, we're, we're backtracking and we're backward mapping to that. So, we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of the time between now and then to communicate and to respond to what the facility findings are, to ask for prioritization feedback from your community and your stakeholders and from you as a board, and to use that to craft potential solutions that we could take to your community. So, this timeline, I'm not going to go through every single line item here, is, really marks this out. And what I'd like you to focus on are a couple of, couple of key things. We have stars along the way. And these stars are really showing you where you as a school board have key engagement opportunity and where is really important for you to be part of this process. The first star is where we are tonight. And it's understanding the process, asking questions and being prepared for the assessment findings that are going to be coming. The next star is what I talked about a few minutes ago. We will be presenting to the, the committee of the board in December, followed by the full board in January. That's what these two stars are. That is EUA's reporting out on the findings of our study. Subsequent to that, at the end of January, JP Cullen will be here presenting to you at a high level, some very preliminary costs associated with just the building conditions portion of our study. We won't have solved anything yet. We don't, we don't know what those long-range solutions are. But by then, we will certainly have identified what those high-level capital needs are in your buildings. And their job is to help put some current pricing to that. So, you understand as you start to think about your buildings and your sites, what is that at least basic level of capital improvement need? And then we'll start talking about improving environments. We'll talk about space solutions. We'll spark, start talking about all of that. You will have had the facility, complete facilities assessment presented to you. You will understand some high-level costs associated with the capital maintenance needs or capital building condition needs. And we're going to begin to prepare for community conversations where we would take that same information out first to your buildings and talk to staff and then to your community for their input and feedback. It's also important is in the middle there is when your strategic planning work group is going to be reporting out. And that's incredibly important because that's another very important mile mark, milestone that we use to help guide our work. It needs to align with your strategic plan, which is being defined at the same time. So, as we continue to go through that, our goal is to have community engagement to then use that feedback to define what could be some potential solutions and priorities for a November Phase One project. And with that in mind, we, we are identifying late spring to go out to the community again through a community-wide survey, much to like, much the way you did back in 2020, very successfully. It gave you direction and feedback from all stakeholders to be able to participate in that process. And then with that in mind, by June, you'll see another star in June. Our goal is that by June of 2024, this, you as a board, supported by our team, will be able to begin to confirming whether or not you're comfortable moving forward for November, number one. That's, that's the first step. Are we comfortable presenting something to the voters? And if so, what would that look like? What should those priorities be? What specifically are we asking from, from our voters? And that allows you to be set up for a board action in August so that then we're moving into your full communications and outreach effort where we're talking to everyone or making sure they understand and have the opportunity to ask questions. And that's what culminates in November. So, this is a, there are many plans within this plan, I will say. Um, there's, this does not begin to capture all the tasks of this team and all of their team, their team members. But hopefully, it lays it out for you so that you can see which one step at a time sort of informs the next. That's a lot of information. I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions on this schedule or the process before I turn it over to Tori for a look under the hood about the facilities assessment. Greg, come on, you always have questions. All right. Okay, well, we're going to turn this over to Tori. She's going to talk about the assessment. I do want to make sure you, you are, are aware, we are showing examples from other school districts. So, as you see things in this facilities assessment preview, don't try to figure out which building it is because it's not Janesville, okay? It's really designed to help you understand and set expectations for the next Got it? Okay, you can take the clicker there.
I'll get, got all the hard stuff out of the way, so I got the easy part, I hope. So, uh, jumping into the facilities assessment, um, you know, it, it's, it's one part of this larger schedule that Kit just walked you through. And so, you know, the, the, the part on the, the schedule that you see here on the screen is, is really kind of the very first phases of, of what she just outlined. And there, to her point, many, many tasks happen within each of these bars. So, our, our, you know, star here on, on, you know, the, the 14th is this presentation tonight. And you can see stacked above that are many overlapping tasks that happen concurrent with one another. We're continuing facilities evaluations, confirming those findings with staff and, and administration. Bob and his team are working closely with your staff, principals and senior leadership on adequacy and educational space evaluations. Cullen is, is starting work on, on cost evaluations. P O B's starting work on and continuing work on athletic evaluations and, uh, doing a deeper dive on, on that front. And they'll talk about that here in a minute. But just know that, that within each of these bars, there's, there's many subsets of, of each of these bars. So, the, the work has been ongoing all summer and into the fall. It will continue right through the end of the year as we come back to present to you mid-December and then mid-January again at, at committee and full board and share with you our findings. So, that's, that's where we are from a facilities standpoint. Kit also mentioned there's, there's a large number of sites that our team collectively has been part of the investigation of 23, um, sites across the district that represent, you know, all of your schools, the ESC, um, parcels that you own, uh, the athletic venues and the stadium. So, all of those have been in some way, shape or form evaluated by our, our collected group of engineers and, and other experts. And, and that, that amasses to just over 2 million square feet worth of, of, you know, buildings and, and real estate, so. Getting a little bit further into this, so when we talk about facilities assessments, there's really, you know, three broad subsets of that work. The first is what I'm going to talk to you about most tonight is building and site conditions. And really what we're looking at there is what's the current condition? It's a snapshot in time of each of the facilities. It looks at, you know, the, the conditions that we can easily observe by walking around, getting on the roofs, going in the basements, um, things like that. We're, we're not performing destructive tests or forensic tests. It's really what, uh, we as, as professionals can observe from, from walking through the hallways and, and getting into the rooms. The next component that Bob's going to elaborate on is educational adequacy. And really what educational adequacy gets to is how well do your buildings support the curriculum that you're trying to deliver to your students? Buildings and, and educational spaces are different today than they were 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. And so, as education has advanced, uh, how well do the buildings support that advancing education? And then lastly, the, the third major component of a facilities assessment is understanding how well your buildings are utilized. You know, what is the capacity? How many students can we put in there? How many students are in there? How is that building used throughout the day? And so, thankfully, that work has already been completed, as Kit mentioned. Uh, Bob and Roberto had worked last year and into this year along with MD Roffers to evaluate the, the district, uh, capacity as a whole and then compare that with growth projections that Roffers had delivered earlier this year. So, those are the three major facets of a complete facilities assessment. Any questions before I go any further? Nope, all right. So, as I mentioned, one of the major categories is the building and site conditions. Visual observations, we're documenting, we're talking to maintenance staff, janitors, principals, Dave Leader who represents, uh, the Buildings and Grounds Committee as a whole, trying to understand how the buildings function, what works, what doesn't, what needs to be, um, memorialized in our, uh, evaluation so that we can turn that over to Cullen and then they can put costs to a potential fix if something needs repair. I think I went too far here. All right, so when we, when we look at buildings and grounds, uh, we, we evaluate them on a scale of one to five, one being critical, things that need to be addressed right away. At the other end of the spectrum, five represents something that is in like-new condition. Maybe it was replaced in the last couple of years and so we expect it to last for a long time. Three would represent kind of an average condition. You know, if a building is 20 years old, uh, you know, what does, what would we expect a 20-year-old building to look like? So, uh, we, we use our, our accumulated knowledge and, and expertise to try to assign scores the best we can. Sometimes we need to evaluate them and adjust them up and down based upon further conversations once we start to, uh, share those out with the district. But generally, we're, we're pretty good and pretty accurate with our initial pass of scoring. So, how does that then start to get reported out? So, what you see here and what Kit had mentioned was, uh, some examples. You know, this is not Janesville, don't try to understand these numbers. But this would be a, a typical, what we call a scorecard, uh, for a building. And we look at a variety of different large categories, site, mechanical systems, interior conditions, exterior conditions, you know, what's the roof like, so on and so forth. So, we identify subsets within each one of those, we give scores to each one of those. And then at the very bottom, you can start to see that those start to, uh, compile an average score. And that's an average score for that category, for that building. From there, we can take that information and then start to aggregate it across building from building and roll that information up. So, what you'll start to see is, um, the conditions averaging out for buildings. So, what's important to remember, and, and we'll talk about this again in December and again in January, a building might look fine, might be average, right? Uh, showing that the expected wear and tear for a building of that age. But there may be aspects of a building that are critical. And so, you'll see in the second column there, you know, that building has a score of 2.66 at the bottom for the average. But it has a critical deficiency that's identified in red at 1.7. So, when we go into this further in, in December and January, know that there's a lot of backup information that helps support the numbers that we put up there and that that information is available to you in case you need to, you know, dive deeper and, and understand how we get to here. So, everything's backed up, you can, we can justify the numbers, we can support the scores that we give. But the, the numbers that you see on, on the roll-up summaries are average numbers. Doesn't always tell the, the full story. Going to turn it over to Lindsay here in a second and she's going to walk you through how she and her team evaluate the sites and then, and then further on into the athletic, uh, aspects of the site. And as she wraps up, Bob will come up and, and continue the conversation about, uh, educational adequacy. So, any, any questions? Sure.
So, going back one slide?
Yep.
The, if I'm looking at the second column, the 1.7, the red?
Yes.
That's where you're going to take into account the, the, uh, for lack of better word, I, I'm not good at numbers and stuff.
Sure.
The, the outliers, you know, for instance, we have four schools in our district, you know, that are old. My father went to them.
Sure.
You know, and he's gone. But one of them I go to frequently. And you look at that school compared to one of our brand-new schools, all of a sudden, you got an average. But how are you going, I mean, you've got a school that's pushing, you know, 100 years old compared to another one that's not that old.
Right.
All of a sudden, you know, your numbers are going to skew significantly.
Yeah.
So...
And, and, and that, that is a, a challenge with this, this process, right? When the, the higher up and the, and the more compressed you make the information, you average in a lot of those factors. So, that's why we, we also start here. And we can say, within each of those categories, yeah, you might have some things that are, have been recently replaced. Maybe the boilers were replaced or the windows replaced. And so, those are new things in a very old building. But that very old building still has some very old things left to fix. So, this really starts to tell the more complete story of that building, not so much this information here, right? So, we, we use the two together to tell the more complete story. This is a way to get a quick snapshot of the health of a building. But this really tells more of the complete story, if, if that helps kind of...
And so, when you start planning, the more detailed pictures of the building are, are what
Correct.
Everyone should be looking at as opposed to averages.
Right, so it, at, the average just kind of portrays a, a larger trend, you know, if, if things have been kept up, which, you know, they have in many respects been kept up over the years. And so, that's reflected in those average scores. Uh, in many districts that we work with, it's not always the case. And so, those average scores trend lower. But to your point, this screen here starts to allow us to, to kind of pick and choose the things that we want to focus on. Maybe the building control system, uh, needs to be addressed or the fire alarm system needs to be replaced or the windows need to be replaced. We'll be able to identify more specific categories of work on this screen and on this page than the, the page that you would, had first identified.
Okay, because I, I think as we go back to, and I don't want you to go all the way inside.
Sure.
That number, that, uh, the district facilities will be equitable. Well, there's, there's not an equitable, uh, issue there, how do I put this? Equi- there's a, there's a real inequitable process with our schools, especially when you look at our elementary schools. And so, as we look at this, I, I hope that all the groups are looking at, how do we seriously divide the pie, you know, in an equitable manner? And we, and we focus on some of our, you know, um, have-nots.
Right, and, and so that, if you remember when Kit was up here earlier and she showed the funnel, the next step is identifying the priorities. That's where that really starts to come into play because this is really about the information gathering. And then the next step says, okay, what are we going to do with the information we just gathered? How are we going to sift that out and figure out what's important? What do we move forward with? And so, that's the stage where we start to talk about, do we look at making all the elementary schools equitable? Maybe that's a priority. Maybe there's different competing priorities that, that rise to the top that need to be considered. And all that comes out during that, that second step down the funnel, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, Lindsay.
All right, so for point-of-begins portion of our evaluation of your 23 sites, um, there's really two pieces to this. Um, our first contract is with EUA and we're taking a look at those 23 sites, evaluating basically the exterior of those. So, we're taking a look at your hard surfaces, your asphalt, concrete, sidewalk, your playgrounds, um, your ADA accessibility, your fencing, your gates, your signage. Um, so, we're taking that all into consideration when we walked all 23 sites this past summer. Um, so, similar to EUA, we'll be providing a scorecard on a rating of scale of one to five. Um, so, that's in that top left-hand corner. Um, what you see on the top right, that's going to be a little bit more breakdown of each site. Um, what we like to do is give a condition, um, age, product, owner comments that we might have picked up during our site visits and then, um, recommendations from us. So, that's one portion that we have that were contracted directly with EUA. The next, we're actually contracted... Raise press.
Down.
There we go. Oop.
Down, my down arrow.
Down, okay, perfect. Um, the next two slides are going to be more athletic activities focused. Um, these are going to be, um, taking evaluations of your high schools, your Parker and Craig High Schools, and then the High Schools, and then the two parks, Monterey and Riverside. So again, these are more athletic activities-focused. A good example of an exhibit for each site that you're going to get is in the top-left corner. We're going to be taking each of your athletic spaces, breaking them up, and then from there, we're breaking them down even further. So we're going to be giving a similar rating scale of one to five. We're going to be rating, for instance, Area 7 varsity baseball. We'll be taking a look at your backstop system, your sideline fencing, your outfield fencing. We'll be taking a look at the infield, what kind of condition that's in, your outfield, your dugouts, bullpens, batting cages. We'll really be breaking down each of those activity spaces in depth. And then lastly, this is going to be the summary, so that'll be taking all, I think this is zero through 10 spaces, and we'll be giving an average or average for each field, and then coming up for your entire complex, a site average. So again, those are going to be focused on athletics, activities for those four different spaces. Any questions, thoughts, comments on that?
Theoretically, if we turn this digital... You're right. Theoretically, as, as we look at this, it's very comprehensive on the physical arts in that, as I call them. Have you, are you looking at something for the other arts, music, band, all that?
Yeah, so that's kind of why I said, you know, athletics slash activities. So when we're walking in these spaces and taking in, you know, comments, considerations from the district personnel, we'll actually do interviews as well. So we are not only just considering the athletic portion, we're also considering cheer, band, any events that you might have out there such as graduation. So that is definitely new, upcoming, and that is very appealing to the community. So we definitely take that into consideration, yes. Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right, and then last portion of the facility assessment, I'll have Bob come up here and explain a little bit more in terms of what we look at when we do what we call the educational adequacy assessment. That starts to look at, again, how well do the spaces support the delivery of learning to the students, so... Bob?
Thanks, Dory. So what we've talked about so far is really those conditions, right? What are the age of the products that are in the buildings, of the mechanical systems, of the other things, and how well are they performing? But as we alluded to earlier, education is a lot more than just the stuff that's in the rooms. It's how are we teaching, and do we have the right kinds of rooms and the right kinds of spaces to allow you to teach in the ways that you want to teach? And so that's the purpose of the educational adequacy assessment, is to help us get a visual representation of how well the spaces within the buildings match the delivery system for your educational model. So in order to conduct the educational assessment, we, and mostly Roberto and myself, and then some of the principals met Tanya, who worked behind the scenes with us as well, as we walked through your buildings. We walked through the buildings, we observed, we do it with kids and furniture in place so we can kind of understand and see how the spaces are being used. And then we interview the principals at each building to get a better understanding of what they're attempting to do and what the challenge points that they're seeing are. We also then go back to the office and we compare metrics against what we're seeing as industry standards in terms of areas and spaces and expectations of what we would see in new construction, so we can compare that to what you have. All right. So similar to the building conditions report, we have a five-point sliding scale that we rate each area in. The actual words are a little different because we're not now looking at the stuff, we're looking at the space. But excellent is a five, very poor is a number one. And similar to building conditions, we have these focus areas that we look at for each building so that we can compare across each building to develop a comprehensive score. So within educational adequacy, we're looking at site, which includes parking, traffic flow, site safety, that kind of stuff. We look at safety in general, your security camera systems, any problem points that you're experiencing with safety and the configuration of spaces and the way the spaces relate to each other. And we're looking at your core learning areas, your graded classrooms, if you will. We're looking at intervention and resource spaces, common areas, which include gym, cafeterias, auditoriums, specially learning areas, art, music, STEM spaces, for instance, career technical education, breakout and collaboration spaces, and then office and administrative areas. And then we develop a similar score system for each building so you can kind of see where the buildings stack up against each other. So similar to what we talked about on the building conditions, those scores roll up into a summary chart. I do want to point out, each building gets its own column on the chart, but then each category is rolled up into a simpler number so that you can see across the buildings where it says building name at the top. That'll eventually get replaced with Craig and Parker and Franklin and, and your, your building, so you'll be able to compare them very easily next to each other in that chart to kind of see where your problem points from a space standpoint might lie. All right. From there, that information helps us under, better understand the other side of the capacity and utilization picture. So we've already done capacity and utilization studies, you've already seen that, but capacity and utilization can be a little deceptive on its own, because if we're just looking at how many students can you fit in a classroom, that's a little bit different than is that classroom the right kind of classroom to have? So we really see that educational adequacy, the building conditions, and the capacity and utilization as all working hand-in-hand together to tell the complete story of where you're at and what your needs are. Just as a reminder, again, utilization is really just how are you using your spaces? How many students are in the spaces at any given hour of the day? How many periods a day does each space get used? And that information then rolls up to give us that capacity number. How many stu, how many students could we reasonably expect that you could fit in the building versus how many are you fitting in right now? Since that information was already done, really all we're doing for this portion of the report is just updating your enrollment numbers so that you have an accurate comparison of where you stand now versus what your capacity is. Okay, any questions on educational adequacy or utilization before we move forward? All right, excellent.
Bob? All right, I will say that I think educational adequacy is the component of the study that your principals and your, your cabinet team will be the most interested in, because it directly relates to teaching and learning, right? Everyone knows about facilities assessments from the technical side of it, the building condition side. This is the missing piece. This is the missing piece that will directly inform and align with your strategic plan and your goals and your mission and vision. And how do we align these together? How do we make strong decisions about the future facilities for Janesville? I'm super excited to see the outcome of that for you and for you to process that. Okay, we'll wrap this up. I'm just going to reiterate the next steps and these key dates, because there's a lot coming at you, and it's exciting, but December 19th is when we're going to be here, meeting with the Finance, Building and Ground Subcommittee. Got it, that time, Dan. January 11th is the Special Board Workshop that we are hosting specifically to report out in the facilities assessment. There are 23 sites worth of information, so I need you to come well-rested, hydrated, and we're going to provide snacks. I don't know exactly what, but we're going to make sure that you're fed, because we need to be in this together and focused and alert so that you're processing what we're, what we're bringing forward. Then a couple weeks later, on January 30th, we get to have another board workshop, and it's also going to be fabulous, and you're going to need to be well-hydrated and fed and well-rested, because that's when Cullen's coming with some numbers. Again, just on the building condition side, so we're not coming with solutions, we're not coming with, with any kind of like, what, what if we did this? That's all the next step, but it will help ground you in what the reality is of your current building needs. These are really important meetings, and so we're excited about this work. We hope that you are. Our challenge is, right now, to continue fin, finalizing the data collection and to make it something that is clear and understandable and transparent for you and your community, because we are committed to rolling that out. We're doing that with some staff meetings that will be held in the middle of January, you see those there. We're going to be holding staff, regional staff meetings at each of the middle schools. And then after we've had that second workshop with you, we're going to be rolling out some community conversations. We're thinking that's going to be late February or into early March. So that's kind of the key, critical next steps for this facility's work. Are there any questions on that? I know that this has been a lot to absorb, but we just want you to be prepared for what's coming, and hopefully you're as excited about it as we are. Good? Thank you very much for your time and your trust. Oh, and there's a timeline again in case you just missed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Carl. Yeah, I do have one quick question. Most of these meetings be in the evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I think the workshops are five, if I'm, they're early, a little earlier so that...
Yeah, I have an employer, I have to notify that I won't be there.
I understand, sir, yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I will save my questions to December. Okay. Next item is a bit of a mouthful. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $4 million. Mr. McCray? Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve. That's right.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers and a second by Commissioner Merlott. Is there any discussion necessary?
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
So this is pretty routine, I mean, we've done this for a couple of years now, I think.
I believe we've done it since the fall of 2020, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, but I just note, I mean, I'm just noticing that we're, we put an amount of $4 million, not to exceed $4 million, and last year was $3 million.
Correct.
So what is the reason for the uptick?
Well, I have 30 slides in my next PowerPoint here to, to answer that question. So simply put, the budget is bigger, right? And think of it with the SRR funding as an example, right? So we're doling out cash, right? So we don't have that cash up front. So we receive a bill, we pay a bill, we submit a claim to the Department of Public Instruction, right? So our, you know, the budget's getting bigger and we just have more cash outflowing.
Okay, okay. And...
So, and I'm sorry, it's kind of a ceiling, right? So think of that $4 million as safe harbor. Also keep in mind in Matt's memo, right, this is a line of credit. Some districts will go and let's say issue maybe $4 million in securities, right? And then they'll have that whether they use $4 million or not. Line of credit, again, just places us in the safe harbor. We typically maybe ask for, I shouldn't say typically, right, there's a mathematical formula. We may get to the point to where maybe we're only tapping 1.5, 1.75, it just gives us that safe harbor.
I was going to ask, so, because we, you know, like we, we authorized for $3 million last year, but we didn't have to use it, and you don't, I, I know you can't, you don't necessarily have a crystal ball, but you're probably not anticipating us having to use the $4 million, all of it.
I, I, I'm not, right? But let's say we get really close, right? The worst-case scenario, for whatever reason arises, we, we don't want to do it again and amend it.
Right, okay, all right, thank you very much.
Certainly, great questions, thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I think it's important to, to tell people that one of the reasons we have a harder time, even with our Fund 10 things, and it's when it's in good shape, is the state has delayed giving us money over the years, different times of the year than that. It's since I came on the board, we've, I think we've had two adjustments. Instead of June, it's actually July now, we used to get it then, and some other things, but that's a reason why we have to do this a lot. I'm not sure if those are the months that would be affected, but some months are, because they aren't giving it to us at the same dates that they used to.
Yeah, it, it's certainly a component of the formula, right? So it's not the reason, but it certainly contributes to the reason for the line of credit, yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $4 million. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes six. With Commissioner Paul.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. Janesville Way Forward Strategic Plan Update, Superintendent Holsman.
Yes, I want to provide a quick opportunity to just share a little bit about our progress with our strategic planning. You've been getting some memos from me during our weekly updates about things that are going on. We're meeting next week, Monday. We do have part of our presentation. Bob and is going to be, Mr. Morse is going to be doing some presentation to our group, talking a little bit about learning space environments. But we're working on, we're pretty close to submission and purpose statements. Last meeting, we talked a little bit about threats and opportunities. I had an opportunity along with Lori Miller, our facilitator, to meet at six buildings and talk to all of our middle school and high school students to get feedback from them, which we present into the overall process. I do believe that our goal is to provide a recommendation in this strategic plan in February, which will align, hopefully synergistically, with the information that the board heard tonight. Again, we continue to have 60-plus individuals who are participating in this. There's always an open table, so if board members want to come that aren't on the committee and just check it out, feel free to do so. You can come and stay for a little while or the whole thing if you want. Our next meeting is Monday at 6 o'clock at Marshall Middle School, and again, we'll have some opportunities to talk a little bit about those learning environments, really dig into our threats and opportunities, and then try to work through some of those prioritization strategies, like what are we going to start paying attention to? And I think we're on track to be done in December, so we have two more meetings left and probably some small work after that.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Okay, next is the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee Report. Commissioner Myers, pinching.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Paul had an obligation, so she had to leave. So at the PPC meeting, which was earlier this month, on the 6th, I believe it was, yes, we had a really great presentation about AVID, and we had a, we heard from three student presenters and staff and parents, and it showcased, showcased the significant growth in organizational skills, public speaking, presentations, note-taking, and those kinds of things that the students were experiencing. And you should probably check out the video of the PPC meeting for the details of that presentation. We had a graduation requirement policy update. It was passed on the consent agenda tonight, so the details of it are shared there. But one, one, or a couple of things to note about that is that we incorporated, we incorporated AVID into it. Where's my notes? Come on, Kathy. And, here it is, into the graduation requirements as an option, and, and also included a opportunity for next year's freshmen to take a government class as part of their social studies requirements and exp... to take a government class as part of their social studies requirements and expectations. So, that's great. We had a staffing update from Mr. Gardner. He shared an update on the general staffing considerations that are being used to help us prepare as we start to organize our staffing plan for the coming year, including TPR considerations. And then, we had discussion on the calendar. So, we didn't look at any actual calendars. What we talked about was the process that we have been going through to come up with a calendar proposal. And so, all the work that's been done to develop the calendar. There have been representatives from all sorts of stakeholders, including board members on the Calendar Planning Committee. They have been working since this spring on it. And they have done a lot, just an amazing amount of work, gathering feedback and, you know, on the calendars, or the calendar. And we expect a rollout at the next PPC meeting. And we'll pass it on to the full board for approval in December. So, that's our report.
Any questions for Kathy? All right. See you none. Our next item, summary of board requests. I wasn't given any, so I assume that there are none at this point. And that brings us to our adjournment. We have reached the end of our agenda.
Do you want to do future meetings or meetings?
No, I don't. No, let's do that. Thanks for the reminder. It wasn't perfect tonight.
You did an excellent job. Our Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, November 21st, at 4:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. Our PPC Committee will meet on Monday, December 4th, at 4:30 PM, also at the Educational Services Center. And our next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:00 PM, also at the ESC.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we have reached the end of our agenda. We are adjourned to our board workshop.